What we're gonna do is go ahead with the council meeting. When we get down to the certification, we'll let Ms. Nelson tell you about what the problem is, if there is a problem, and hold we out, it might got something by then. So this meeting of the Gadsin City Council will now come to order, and the Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Eagles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Harris to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Father, we come to you again today, asking you to be in our midst, asking you to lead us, guide us, and direct us in the manner in which everything that we do will be pleasing to you. We thank you for your goodness and your mercy. We thank you for the leaders of this city. We thank you for the leaders of this state, this country, and we ask that you continue to abide in them so that they will always be in your favor. And as we go through this process today, we ask that you will continue to be with us, lead us, guide us, and direct us, and we will continue to give you all the praise and all the glory, these blessings we ask in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the City Council meeting held on August 27th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, do you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of August 22nd through the 28th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, do you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
We don't have a mayor or an assistant mayor either one, so I don't guess we got any.
They were.
No proclamations today.
They were busy talking in the hallway. I don't know if somebody still got them tied up or not.
Okay. Unfinished business and nuisances on property located at 1031 Fourth Avenue and 321 Wilson Street have been abated, therefore no action by the council is needed. Number nine, this is a time and place as advertised, to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance rezoning property located at 2900 Million Boulevard. RGC Ventures LLC has requested the property be rezoned from I-1 Light Industry to B-2 General Business to be consistent with the shopping plaza. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended the rezoning. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? This ordinance was presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Our next public hearing is an ordinance rezoning property located on Morning View Drive and Hutchins Avenue. Philip Davis requested the property be rezoned from R-1, one-family resident, to B-1 Neighborhood Business for the purpose of marketing as commercial. There was opposition from surrounding property owners, and the Planning Commission voted six to one with one abstention to recommend the council approve the rezoning. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Would you mind coming to the microphone, please?
Okay, my name is Jane Frederick. My address is 419 Roslyn Drive.
Is it all right for someone to be speaking to the mic?
And I have a petition here.
Please state your name. Tell her, Iva.
Jane, J-A-N-E, Frederick, F-R-E-D-E-R-I-C. My address is 419 Roslyn Drive.
Thank you.
And I have a petition here that outlines our objections to the zoning change. If you'd like to look at these, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, and I will keep this into the record and can provide copies to the council members. I'll pass it down now.
Okay.
Okay, when the Planning Commission sent out a letter that told us about the change in the ordinance, in the resolution, they just sent the letter to like about eight households. But anything that happens on Morning View Drive concerns everybody in Oakley Estate. We have a drainage problem, which I've outlined in the petition, and anything that's built on that property would add to a runoff that would cause more drainage problems than we have already. Also, we object to the fact that we have no control over what kind of business is put We're being asked to approve of something that's like a pig and a goat. We don't, we don't know what we're getting, and we don't want the wrong kind of business in our neighborhood. But the main thing that concerns me is the traffic problem. If you look at the, at the map, you see where there's no access to parcel two except Morning View Drive. And that particular section of Morning View Drive is just barely passable with two cars. So if they have a, an outlet to get onto that property, it's gonna cause a real traffic problem. We have children in our neighborhood and us older people that like to get out and walk, and we think it would be a traffic hazard more than, more than it is already. But those of us that own property there, we moved there because we wanted to live Mr. Davis bought property because he needs to make profit on it. And I don't have anything against people making a profit, but not in our experience. And we have a lot of younger families that have rental units up there. They have young children, and they moved there because that's where they wanted to live, so their kids can have a yard to play in, have a dog or a cat, live like normal children. We don't want to see the traffic problem worsen anymore. And that's about it. But I hope you will look at that, and we'd like for you to reconsider. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you, ma'am.
We wanted to, we were not able to get in touch with our councilmen, but we wanted to have a public meeting so that everybody in Oakley Estate could have been informed about this. We weren't able to do it, so at least we'd like to have more time, so maybe we could be better at expressing our concerns.
You've done an excellent job of expressing your concerns. We hear you.
Thank you. There's something I feel very deeply about. I've lived in the same house since 1973, and I've owned it outright for 15 years. I don't want to go anywhere. These are our homes. This is our community. We love one another, and we get along, and I'd like for it to stay that way.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll look into it. Is anybody else who would like to speak in opposition? Does anybody wish to speak in favor?
I think there's one opposition. There's another opposition.
Please state your name and address for the City Clerk.
Sandra Thomas, 405 Morning View Drive. And I'll speak, probably speak for the rest of us, but we are concerned about whatever, you know, is going up up there. I've been up there over 27 years. And like I said, I'm right at the point, I have a sister that lives on Roslyn, and a brother, so I'll totally, we have three houses right there. Ms. Frederick was up there when we moved up there. And we do have a lot of traffic at the end of Morning View. Just a couple of months ago, we had a little boy that got hit up there, and around by the nursing home and everything, it's busy. They have trees grown up, you can't see, cars are constantly running the stop signs up there. And our big concern is the children, and whatever they decide to build, if they sell commercial, we know they can put crackly anything. I'm not against anybody building a business, but we need something that's gonna help the community up there, not, you know, against, you know, that's gonna harm us in any kind of way. And that's the biggest concern. Whatever you all decide to do, or whatever, we need something up there that's gonna help our kids up that way. And we could use a little grocery store up that way, to be honest, because we have to go so far out. But I know whatever is, whatever the decision is, I hope it'd be something to benefit Oakley Estate. And that's all. And Councilwoman Williams, I do, you know, appreciate what you do, but we do need to be more involved, you know, ask you to be more involved with the community up there so we'll know, and you also know what's going on up there, because some are lost, some didn't receive, you know, letters, some don't know what's going on, no more than what we are going back telling them. So whatever decision is, I hope it's something that we would benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to it? Anyone wish to speak in favor of it? Please state your name and address for the City Clerk.
My name is George Day. I'm an attorney here in Gadsden, and I'm here on behalf of Phil Davis, and I'm here to ask the council to approve the application for rezoning of this property. The property in question adjoins the Northside Facility, the assisted living facility there in North Gadsden. There is already commercial use of property that adjoins Phil Davis' property. So we're not coming into an area that is purely residential that does not already have a commercial use, because that's already been there and has been there for many years. Also, as the council is probably aware, this is an area that is going to adjoin Highway 411 when it comes through this part of the city. So there's going to be development at some point or another, because you're gonna have Highway 411 coming through. It's property that directly adjoins the Northside Assisted Living Facility. And Mr. Davis appreciates the concerns of the community and the neighbors that are there, and we know that this, the community in which they live is one that's been in Gadsden for a long time. But I, for example, the lady that was just up spoke about a grocery store. Well, that's one of the uses that can be made of a Neighborhood Business District, and that's exactly what we're seeking, is rezoning of this property from R-1 to the Neighborhood Business District. And I think there are a number of protections that are built into the zoning ordinance, because I think the type of businesses that could be placed in this property, if this application is approved, are types of businesses that the neighbors would not oppose. Drugstores can go in Neighborhood Business District, grocery stores. In fact, the zoning ordinance, the way it reads is that Neighborhood Business District, it talks about uses furnishing retail goods to satisfy the daily household needs of the surrounding residential neighborhoods. So the very definitions in the city ordinance, the zoning ordinance, contemplates that it's the type of businesses that would be expected to meet the needs of adjoining residential areas. It says, "The district regulations are designed for method development of the districts for their purposes and to protect the abutting and surrounding residential areas." So I think the zoning ordinance that the city has in place is well crafted and includes safeguards against development of these areas for the type businesses that should not be there. In fact, if you look at the allowed uses, there are some uses that can't be made without prior planning approval. So I think there are safeguards built in. This, this is an area that I think ultimately will be developed. Our hope is that we can develop this property with businesses that will meet needs of these, these folks that live in this area, hopefully create jobs and perhaps tax revenues, and yet at the same time, working within the confines of existing zoning ordinance, protect the residential properties from the type uses that should not be situated here. So for all those reasons, I would ask the City Council to approve the application for rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? This ordinance was presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Our next public hearing is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to add mobile food vehicles. The next two are concerning mobile food vehicles. Mrs. Davis's Regulations and Operating Parameters for Mobile Food Vehicles. Planning Commission unanimously recommended council amend the zoning ordinance. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution, this ordinance? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I think now's the time I probably need to amend this ordinance. I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance dealing with the time of operations. I think we publicized in the newspaper from 10:08 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. At this time, I would like to amend that to say 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, do you take the vote?
Are we amending the ordinance and also voting on it?
Voting to amend, right, amend it, yeah.
Okay.
Then we'll, maybe vote on it later, I don't know. We'll see what the public hearing says.
Okay. Those in favor to amend the time of operation, to change from 9:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for the amendment.
The Planning Commission unanimously recommended the council amend the, amend the zoning ordinance. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of it? This ordinance was presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week.
Now, Mr. President, if there's no objection, I'd like to make a motion, we suspend the rules and vote on this today.
Second. Clerk, do you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for immediate consideration.
Now, I'll make a motion, we pass.
Second. Is there any discussion?
I think this is, I see several vendors out there, and I know they're probably sitting on edge, wanting to make sure they can be in accordance with the law, so I think we just need to go and get that out the way now.
Anyone else? Clerk, do you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance as amended, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This final public hearing is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to add mobile food vehicles.
That's the one we just did, to permit.
These two of them.
I said, yeah, but we just did that one. That was the one I amended, and we did that one.
Doesn't have, doesn't have, didn't, doesn't permit.
One of them we hadn't done.
We hadn't done the permit. We didn't do, we didn't deal with the first one.
I wonder why it read that, it was just.
There are, there are actually two ordinances that deal with the food vendors. The first one established the regulations. The second one simply amends the zoning ordinance to indicate what zoning designations that they can operate in.
Okay, well, we need to vote on the first one.
It was just adding mobile vendors to our ordinance.
Right.
Right.
Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to that squeak? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, to be consistent, I'll just make a motion that we suspend the rules and vote on this one.
Second. Clerk, do you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have a unanimous vote for immediate consideration.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second. Is there any discussion on this? Anybody in favor?
Is everybody confused? Everybody confused?
Yeah, including me.
I would suggest to anybody that it's interesting, get into this business, or ones who are in business, to get with the building department or the planning department and look this over and see what the regulations are. It tells you where you can set up and when you can set up and when you can't, so. Bow up on it, so you know what you're doing.
And just to be clear, this, these two ordinances, the first one added mobile food vendors to the, to the zoning ordinance. I'm sorry, added mobile food vehicles to the zoning ordinance. The second one added mobile food vendors to the ordinance. So that's, that's the distinction between the two. One adds vehicles, the other adds vendors.
One just added to, the second one added to the chart that it used, to see which zone they can go in.
Right, okay. We're passing both.
I think we did.
Well, we had it. We got a vote on it.
We might in a moment.
Yeah, we got a vote on this last one.
Are we ready for the vote? Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
You, you got anything? We're to the.
We're still awaiting, so.
Why don't we go ahead then?
We've got a couple more resolutions.
Couple more to do then. Okay, we're gonna skip number 13 and go to 14, Resolution Authorizing Memorandum of Understanding Between the Gadsin Job Corps Center and the Gadsin Police Department and the Edward County Sheriff's Office. This continues the cooperative agreement affirming the joint commitment to maintain law and order on the Gadsin Job Corps Center property. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, do you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
15 is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Greater Gadsin Housing Authority. This continues the community policing program in the seven public housing facilities for the next fiscal year. Under this agreement, the housing authority will reimburse the city for the hourly salary, excluding benefits of five officers. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, do you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New businesses, is there any new business? I don't think so.
No.
Nope.
Department reports, committees, boards, are there any? Citizens requests, Louis Fuller, Theodore Gadsin, he wants to speak to us on the Tequila Mockingbird production.
Good afternoon, hello again. I'd like to express my congratulations to all of you who were successful in the election, and my condolences to those who weren't successful. I've been there and done that, so I can appreciate it, okay? We have the Tequila Mockingbird, our current production of Theater of Gadsden, opens Friday night, be the next two weekends at 7:30, Friday and Saturday nights, and at 2:30 matinee on Sunday. And we were able to cast it, and thank y'all for some of your help. It's gonna be a good show. Also, in rehearsal is Young Frankenstein the Musical, and that should be a fun thing, and that's sponsored by the Gadsden Times and the Advanced Imaging. And Councilman Cannon, I'm not sure you're aware, but we're gonna have zombies running through Alabama City in October. I'm not, I'm not into the zombie or the vampire thing, but it should be a fun thing, and it will benefit Theater of Gadsden, so that should be a, be a fun thing.
I thought, well, we had them running through there, but go ahead.
Thanks again for all the support that the mayor and the, and the council's given the theater.
Louis, did you get a times on those?
I'm sorry?
Did you get a time on those performances?
7:30.
7:30 Friday?
7:30 Friday and Saturday, the next two weekends, and 2:30 matinee on Sunday afternoon.
When will the one in October be? What's the dates on it? Do you have it yet?
It'll be the two weekends in October prior to Halloween. That's when we're timed again with Halloween. Can I give that to you? Thank y'all.
Thank you, Louis.
There you are, John. Who really wrote it, Louis? Who really wrote it? Was it Capote or someone else? I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
We'll get into that one. Louis, I know you probably know your history, but the premiere of Tequila Mockingbird was staged where?
Pittman Theater.
I know. A lot of people probably don't know that and don't realize that, but the original movie... A lot of people probably don't know that and don't realize that, but the original movie, To Kill a Mockingbird, was premiered, it was a huge event. It was premiered right here in Gazzin. I know Louis was there and Bob was there, I wasn't.
I was there, it was twelve o'clock at night premiere.
Oh, it was?
It sure was. Was that not right, Louis? It was at twelve o'clock.
Yeah.
And we had the little boy from Piedmont that played in there, and the young lady from Birmingham that played scout was here, so quite an evening.
Yeah.
But there's some rumor about Truman Capote having some input into writing that.
Okay, due to the Labor Day holiday, Monday's garbage route will be collected today, and Tuesday's route will be collected. Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday's route will not be changed. Now, I, where are we?
We're still waiting at this point.
What do you want to do?
I would suggest that maybe go ahead and complete your council remarks or any other things that you want to do within the order of business, and if we haven't received word that they're on their way, maybe entertain a recess to the council meeting and maybe take a small lunch break or something like that and reconvene at a particular time.
We're waiting on the Board of Registars to certify the provisional votes is what we're doing. It's not going to change anything, I wouldn't think, but anyway, that's something we've got to do.
Can you tell us what state law says about the vote?
The provisional votes. State law specifies that the Board of Registars will conduct whatever investigation is necessary and make a determination on which provisional votes should be counted. The state law also provides that the municipal governing body, in the case of a municipal election, actually tabulates those provisional votes. And so, we are waiting on the certification from the board, and then whenever that is received, the council would have the opportunity to proceed with tabulating and certifying the election results from last Tuesday.
Wasn't there a timeline that we're supposed to did this today? Am I correct or wrong about that?
State law mentions that the council can begin their canvassing of the votes at twelve noon.
Okay.
Okay, Ben, you want to start?
I don't know where Johnny is. You have anything else?
I'm good, go ahead.
Bob K. Moore is not here to get really excited about First Friday, so she asked me to talk to y'all about it. I believe it's going to be this Friday. Isn't that right, Billy?
First Friday.
This is what you call real excitement, man. This is up there, okay. This, the theme of it's going to be buses, buggies, and beetles. So, to me, that means Volkswagens all the way. So, they'll have buses with VWs and buggies and beetles, I reckon. But it's going to be a lot of fun. I personally like the food and the shopping and the live music and the classic cars and also the VWs, so it should be a fun weekend, really. But she did want me to be sure and tell y'all that the entertainment at the Pittman Theater outside will be Sky Dogs. Don't ask me, Billy. At Fifth and Broad is Foggy Hollow, because everybody knows about Foggy Hollow. B.B.N.T., the bank of McPherson Struts, Third and Broad, A.D. Howard, Second and Broad, Cheryl's School of Rock, and back forty Beer Company, David Corn. I think the only other request she had was, other than to come, have fun, bring your family, and enjoy yourselves, don't bring a pet, and don't bring your skateboards, skates. Billy?
I have to leave him home.
That's right.
Who's performing at the, do we have a performance at the?
At the theater, it's not on here, if the.
Concerts are over.
Summer series.
That's all.
We all really, K. Moore could come up here and have y'all leaving right now, going to First Friday. All I did was just try to relay the message, so if I missed anything, I'm sorry. No problem.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. President. Louis, you didn't mention about the facelift we're getting on Wall Street down there, getting up a new sign back up there, a digital sign, everything, know what's going on on Wall Street in Alabama City. That'll be nice, and it's about ninety percent complete. We're doing handicap ramps and on sidewalks down there, we can get people in and out in wheelchairs and stuff, it's handicap. They can come to the plays, they can come shop down there lots easier. We're doing a little work on the crosswalks down there, it's going to be really nice. Also, in October, we'll be having the treats on Wall Street for the kids, just make sure you come out for that. I don't know the date yet on that, but we'll get back with you on day that. Everything's looking good in Alabama City and Wall Street. Just want y'all to come out and shop and enjoy the theater. Louis, I appreciate everything y'all do down there for us. That's all I got.
How many provisional votes are there?
Councilman Stewart, there are approximately sixty that were processed. And also, let me add, there were a couple of delays in the board being able to make their decisions on some of these, and we also had a holiday yesterday, so that might account for some of the delay. And as well as there being a good number of provisional balloting, we had a few more involved with this election. There was a recent Supreme Court ruling that resulted in a Secretary of State rule, it's called fail-safe voting, and so that did increase the number of provisionals that were processed on Election Day, probably than what we had had in times past.
Probably changing these districts too, probably create a problem.
We also, the city had a redistricting, and so those things, you know, might have added to.
The reason I ask that, these provisional votes are not going to have an effect on any of the races. So, I suggest we take a break, lunch, and come back, and I'm telling you this because it's, it will not have an effect on any of the races.
That is true. When you look at the numbers that you already have from the Election Day totals versus the number of provisionals in the mayor's race, that is not a large enough number. When you look at the valid accounting certificate that was turned into my office, there were not enough provisional votes in any single district to affect the district race outcome as well.
So, I didn't want y'all hanging around thinking this is going to have an effect on the outcome. It will not. Just all the races are settled.
Mr. President, why don't we just take a break until they get theirs done?
Well, when we finish commenting, we will.
Comment, that's my comment.
In favor, would you like to comment?
Yeah, Ben, let me.
I'll let you.
Okay. Just, just a quick announcement, you talked about First Friday, First Saturday, this will be happening on Tusculose Avenue this Saturday, so please, ma'am, and please, sir, come out. I think things kick off about one o'clock. They're going to have, I think, boxing exhibition and several other entertainments going to be going on First Saturday on Tusculose Avenue, so please, ma'am, and please, sir, come.
You going to be in the ring?
No, I'm going to be in Indiana at my grandson's football game, even though I've been accused of going out of town a lot. I will be out of town this weekend at his football game, and I don't apologize for that either.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to take the opportunity to thank those folks from North Gazzin that came out today and expressed their concerns about potential rezoning and commercial development in North Gazzin. I can, I can tell you that if I lived in, in that area and this type of discussion was underway, I'd have the exact same concerns as you do. One of the unique dynamics, and I, you know, there is some discussion statewide about how to manage this dynamic, but it's very difficult to preserve and protect the residential element while at the same time managing a commercial growth or commercial development that may be happening right on the butt of it. We deal with this pretty much throughout the city. We've got our main thoroughfare that runs right down the middle of the city, and on either side, you've got residential districts. And those folks aren't always happy when there's a new Walmart or a new commercial operation that pops up because it creates, it creates new traffic, new lighting concerns, noise pollution. It creates a lot of things that those folks weren't accustomed to before they came in. So, so again, I definitely, Ms. Davis and Ms. Frederick, your concerns are very, very well understood, and we appreciate you presenting them. The unfortunate part about that is that the resolutions are not easy. They're not, because you have to balance two competing interests. You really do. I'm like you, after, after nine o'clock, there's nowhere for me to get milk in North Gazzin. I live on the very last street in the city limits, so much like you, when nine o'clock hits, if I haven't gotten it by then, I've got to drive to Walmart and get it. And so, there has been a cry from many residents for us to drive some level of commercial development in, in that area. Well, again, you know, that brings us back to what we're talking about today. When you start talking about that commercial growth and that commercial development, then it definitely conflicts with the preservation of that quiet and peaceful residential environment. So, there's some middle ground, we've just got to work to get there. I can tell you that for the first two years of my last, of my last term, I, or this term, I pretty much had a death lock on some, some, some housing developers who I wanted to develop some interest in the Oakley Estates area in particular, because right now, all we're doing is tearing houses down in Oakley Estates. That's just the, 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 the honest truth about what's happening in terms of residential development. There are a number of nuisance lots there. That area is about sixty-five percent rental property, first time in its history that it's been that flip-flopped, so, and it creates, and you hear the mayor grunting down there because it creates a very difficult situation in terms of managing the residential element because you've got a lot of property owners who live outside of the city who really don't care, who really don't care, and they're not taking care. So, we're cutting grass constantly in Oakley Estates. We're constantly tearing down houses. It's a very difficult situation, and, and I'm very aware of what's going on up there, very much aware. And, and of course, when we, when we talked about this at our, we actually had our, had the building department to come out and do a presentation with a map where we talked about what our options were in the Oakley Estates area. You know, we're limited. Until we can get that area to the point that someone's willing and has the ability to, some private investor's willing to come in and do some level of residential development, there are not very many options. And that's unfortunate because there are some very good people and some good property owners up there, and two of them are sitting in the back, two of them presented today. And so, again, I share your concerns. So, we've had our public hearing today, you followed the process. Always want to encourage you, I'm very particular about when you, when you reach out to me as a, as your elected official, always contact the city clerk's office because that puts me on record as owing you a phone call back, and I want to encourage that because, because again, if you, if you, if you don't do that, there's always that prospect that you're going to miss me at home or, or miss me trying to relay a message. Always, always contact the city clerk's office, and please be sure, we talk, we discuss these issues almost religiously at our district meetings, whether it be in East Gazzin or in, at Thompson. We try to flip-flop the, the meetings to make sure we accommodate everybody's travel. We're, we're one of those districts in District Two where we cover both sides of the river, so we always try to make sure we flip-flop it to make sure we make it convenient for everybody. But again, we're not, we're not at all missing the very unique dynamic that exists in, in that community. And again, it's a dynamic that exists throughout the city, and I want to appreciate, I appreciate, I want to let everybody know that I appreciate your involvement, I appreciate you stepping up and raising your concerns at both the zoning commission meeting and at, at this public hearing today, because that's how the process works, and we'll do our best to continue to take into account those concerns.
In my opinion, the North Gazzin District is, we need to do as much as we can to have development. We continue to lose people to the river and to small communities south of us, and to put a stop to that some way, we need to have an area, and that's the only one there is in my opinion, to develop where people can build a house that they want to live in and not, because we do have the river. They can get on the river up there as well as down the other place. We just need, we need to really put an effort there toward that particular area, a real effort, spend some money up there, get some people going. Billy?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Litchfield Middle School saga continues. I will continue to encourage you to become involved and get involved in what's happening at Litchfield Middle School. It's our school, it's our community school, it's our city school, so regardless whether you have kids there or not, become involved and let's, let's continue to raise that school to the level that we expect it to be at. The Boys and Girls Club, I continue to ask you to support that organization in East Gazzin. They, they're doing good things, you know, we must also consider the fact that we had lost the Boys and Girls Club, but we resurrected it, and they are in good hands now, and I just need a community participation in making sure that this, this unit continues to survive in East Gazzin. We had Leroy this morning from the YMCA. Again, I'm going to encourage you to support the YMCA. That is a, that's an institution here in our city that's going to be here, and, you know, the competition that he's getting with all the fitness, the fitness organizations that are opening up in the city, I encourage you, regardless of what your status is or what your state of mind is about fitness, but the Young Men's Christian Association, YMCA, is a worthwhile organization that needs your support and membership. So, again, I encourage you to continue to be members in the YMCA and let us keep that organization viable, because you do know that one of the, one of the functions that the YMCA does is they, they manage the Sixth Street Pool, and they're giving, they're doing a lot of things for our kids in the city that a lot of times is not publicized, and that, and we don't know what they're doing, but I assure you that they are doing good things for our city, so support them, please. Thank you.
I'm going to piggyback a little bit on what Billy just said. Provided, the YMCA provided pool space and lifeguards for one hundred and forty-five City of Gazzin Special Olympic athletes, eighteen and older, for the City of Gazzin therapeutic education, provided swim lessons free for a hundred children from government, government-assisted housing communities, provided scholarships for over two hundred and fifty families and adults, also provided summer day camp scholarships for forty-five children, that means they go free. Senior adult exercise classes in government-assisted communities serve two hundred and ninety-five people. Youth programs in city schools, youth in government taught eighty-five students the importance of civic involvement in twenty-fourteen. In addition to that, the YMCA partners with the City of Gazzin to offer management to the Sixth Street Pool. In twenty-fourteen, we served sixteen hundred and fifty-four children from area camps and six hundred and seventy-seven residents at the pool. The YMCA also trains our lifeguards for the pool from January to May each year at the Walnut Street location. We built a, they have outreach programs too. We built a, a big.
Pavilion.
Pavilion. It's a big word like manatees, I couldn't get that one out. Anyway, and they had all kind of arts and crafts and many things, and the guys from over, I think, I forget their name, Robert furnished them lunch, who was that every day?
Pete Huntley.
Pete Huntley.
George Huntley. And the class of, Carver class of sixty-four, I believe.
I believe, that's right, Carver. They brought lunch every day. So, there's a lot more things to it than just going and getting physically fit, which all these other places, they're good places, but, you know, you can't compete with that when it comes to the outreach and what they do for all the kids and the whole community. So, if you're interested in helping them some way, they'd appreciate it.
I think it's class of sixty-five. I don't want to get mad at them.
Robert said class of sixty-five. I know. Thanks.
Okay, now then, we're all, I make a motion we adjourn?
No.
Recession.
Recession?
Yeah.
I would suggest a recess.
We've got to do it today.
And if you want to name a time.
Well, if you adjourn, that you have to start a new meeting. This way, we just continue this meeting.
Exactly.
That's what we're supposed to do.
The clock says it's one o'clock, so we're already behind. We're supposed to do it at twelve.
Why don't we recess until they call us and we come back at our convenience?
I don't know, we have to have a timeframe?
Yeah, we need to.
Well, our convenience is when they call us.
No, I think for the public, we have to set a time. No, I think for the public, we have to set a time.
But we'll let everybody know.
It shouldn't take everybody over an hour to eat, so 2:00 or 2:30?
About 2:30.
2:30.
You have a better time.
Okay. So, your motion, Bill, is to recess to 2:30?
That's correct.
I second.
And like I said, don't sit around and wait and think it's going to change the election. It's not going to have any effect on anybody's election.
You take the vote.
Okay. Those in favor to recess the council meeting until 2:30 PM, let it be number saying, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to recess.
To call this meeting back to order. Turn the meeting over to City Clerk Martha Elrod. That's Junior.
Martha Elrod Junior, okay. Mr. President, we do have the, I have the ballots in my hand that were removed from the ballot boxes. The report from the Board of Registars, they made a decision on the provisional ballot forms, and so, I brought the ones down that are to be counted. So, I will proceed to open the envelopes. And I'm going to first remove the envelopes that were the outside envelopes, not the envelope that contains the ballots. The first ones that I'm opening happen to be the absentees, so there is another envelope to open.
The absentees were not, did you have any provisions in the absentees?
Yes, we did.
Oh, wow.
The state law requires for an application, a ballot to be provisional, if the address was different on the absentee application, when we received it, if it was different than what we had on the voter's list.
Are you still doing absentee?
Yes, I am. We had a few provisional absentees.
I see.
Taking a little bit longer to make sure that the ID is present for those. I think I slipped that one, I got excited and slipped that open first.
Some of my pictures, maybe it's a car.
Believe it or not, I am thirty.
It was sixty of them.
There were about sixty that were reported to us on the provisional, on the ballot rosters that were turned in to my office. The Board of Registars gave a report that, I believe, 38 were to be counted, but I think there was one mistake on that. I think our final total was supposed to be 37 to be counted, and 10 that were rejected. Eleven rejections.
Okay. That ain't adding up.
There was one precinct that the PB3 forms could not be retrieved, they could not be located in any of the boxes, and...
What do you say?
There were several provisional ballots that could not be verified because of that.
Which one was that? Which precinct? Not that it's going to make a difference.
The precinct was 4A. In 4B, there were three that were sealed inside of the secrecy envelope that I could not open. And they were not, we couldn't verify those, or the Board of Registars could not verify those.
Okay.
So, there were three there, I believe four was the number. There were either three or four at the other precinct.
Yeah.
I don't get my weekly report in on time. I'm going to blame the governor for reporting.
I ain't going to touch that.
I am, hurry.
I'm not going to touch that. No, he wasn't talking about you.
Okay.
Hey, you got another two hours, we're going to do it.
I got about five or six things I need to do today, and here I see it.
She's going to get you out in two minutes.
My secretary down there, it won't work, but I have to be tomorrow. And she overworked me until next week, so I'd be...
You're going to be out?
Okay. I will proceed to open the secrecy envelopes.
So, you think you're ready?
I think we're ready to start counting momentarily.
Okay. Are they in order, districts, or just random?
The absentees would not be in order by district. The others started out being that way. I'm not making any promises. About the time I open the envelopes. All right. And if somebody doesn't mind making a tally as we go of how much? This is District Seven. Mitchell James, one vote. Gary Ashley, one vote. Referendum, yes. Did I give you enough time to get organized there?
When you say referendum, did that's one vote on the referendum?
Referendum was yes.
Oh, that's the one, okay. That's the first.
All right, this is also District Seven. Sherman Guyton, one vote. Ben Reed, one vote. This is also a District Seven ballot. Sherman Guyton, one vote. Ben Reed, one vote. Referendum, no.
I'm glad you didn't have a lot more people.
This is a District One. Sherman Guyton, one vote. Billy J. Harris, one vote. District Three ballot. Sherman Guyton, one vote. Thomas Earl Worthy, one vote. This is a District Two ballot. Mitchell James, one vote. Warren Alexander Dates, one vote. This is a District Seven. Jay Holland, one vote. Gary Ashley, one vote. This is a District Seven. Mitchell James, one vote. Gary Ashley, one vote. This is a District Six. Mitchell James, one vote. Johnny Cannon, one vote. This is a District Four, I'm sorry, District Six ballot. District Six. Sherman Guyton, one vote. Johnny Cannon, one vote. This is a District Six. Jay Holland, one vote. Johnny Cannon, one vote. District One ballot. Mitchell James, one vote. Billy J. Harris, one vote. District One. Sherman Guyton, one vote. Cynthia Toles, one vote. District One. Mitchell James, one vote. Cynthia Toles, one vote. District Two. Jay Holland, one vote. Warren Alexander Dates, one vote. District Two. Mitchell James, one vote. There is no vote in the district race. District Two. Mitchell James, one vote. Warren Alexander Dates, one vote. District Two. Mitchell James, one vote. Debraeck Williams, one vote. District Two. Mitchell James, one vote. Debraeck Williams, one vote. District Two. Sherman Guyton, one vote. Warren Alexander Dates, one vote. District Two. Mitchell James, one vote. Warren Alexander Dates, one vote. District Three. Mitchell James, one vote. Robert Avery, one vote. District Three. Mitchell James, one vote. Thomas Earl Worthy, one vote. This is District Three. Mitchell James, one vote. Thomas Earl Worthy, one vote. District Three. Mitchell James, one vote. Robert Avery, one vote. District Three. Mitchell James, one vote. There is no vote in the district race. There is no vote in the district race. District 4. Jay Holland, one vote. Luther D. Abel, one vote. This is District 5. Mitchell James, one vote. Bill C. Stewart, one vote. District 5. Sherman Guyton, one vote. Billy F. Billingsley, Sr., one vote. District 5. One vote for Sherman Guyton. Billy F. Billingsley, Sr., one vote. And referendum, yes. District 5. Sherman Guyton, one vote. Bill C. Stewart, one vote. District 6. Mitchell James, one vote. Johnny Cannon, one vote. District 6. Mitchell James, one vote. Alfred Al Euler, one vote. District 6. Mitchell James, one vote. Alfred Al Euler, one vote. District 6. Mitchell James, one vote. There is no vote in the council race. District 6. Mitchell James, one vote. Alfred Al Euler, one vote. District 6. Mitchell James, one vote. Alfred Al Euler, one vote. And we will have these numbers added to the resolution that you have before you officially. And that's that.
Okay, chief.
So, you have the resolution for your consideration that certifies or declares the municipal election results. All of the numbers that were retrieved from the tapes that were presented on election night have already been added into the resolution. The regular absentee votes were already added. The provisional will be a separate number in each one of the races, and that will be added. And a final copy of this will be tallied by the legal department once we get the numbers to them.
So, we just pass it?
What do we know?
What we've got here?
Okay. Right. If you want to give us some time to write in the numbers and let you see everything before you vote, we can do that?
No.
No, okay.
I make a motion, we ratify the election returns.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in second.
He moved and he seconded.
Stewart moved. Harris seconded. Okay.
Any discussion? Okay, take it.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution declaring municipal election results, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, resolution stands adopted.
I entertain a motion with adjournment.
So? Second.